Well, you're ready to begin.
You want to start and adjourn at the same time.
Okay, well, I'd like to welcome all of you to our March 23 Planning Commission meeting. And so first item on the business will be the flag salute, so if you can join me.
My pledge to allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, in government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Let me see, next item on the agenda is our planning director. No, roll call, roll call.
Okay, good morning. How about Mr. Arcuri?
Here.
Mr. Rokuchi.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
And Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Thank you.
Now we'll hear from the planning director.
Now we're ready. All right, good morning, Commissioners, EJAVO with Planning Services Division. Let's see, a couple of things to report on, nothing from the board meeting this Tuesday, there were no CEDRA items. We had the Barton Ranch subdivision scheduled for April 4th, and 9:20 staff will be asking for a continuance. That's just so we can get more time with the neighbors and the developer to work out some of the last issues regarding easements and setbacks. And upcoming hearings, planning commission meeting agendas are going to be pretty light. April 13th, we have the Yurk- Rikea Granite Bay project, which is a 28 condominium project. April 27th is the Bickford Ranch small lot subdivision map, which is about 1,049 lots in the first phase, so not necessarily a, not necessarily a small lot map. We also have a Tahoe Cedars project, which is redevelopment of a existing lodge site into residential units. So both of those meetings are going to be in Auburn. Hopefully, you know, we have a, we have a quorum for both of those meetings, we've made it today, so thank you. One of the other things I get to report on for the CEDRA and planning are staffing. I'd like to introduce our new principal planner, Shawna Purvines. Oh, have you waved your hand or stand up? Shawna comes from us, from Eldorado County, worked with the Community Development Agency over there in several positions. She's going to be leading our new Housing and Economic Development Division, so we're anxious for that and excited to have her here, so welcome aboard Shawna, thank you. We also have a new associate planner coming on board in a couple of weeks, so at the next meeting we'll, we'll make some introductions there, too. So that's all I have today, if there's any questions from the commission.
On April 27th, do we expect to be at full board here? Because that being close to Roseville, and I don't know who the developers are and that anymore, you know, I might have to reclose because of what I told you earlier.
So we're gonna, so, so we hope for that meeting, since we do have a Tahoe item, we'll probably be meeting, we'll be in Auburn, but we'll probably be at the domes, and we'll do a live video feed up to Tahoe.
The Bickford Ranch one is one I'm thinking about.
As far as having a, having a quorum?
Yeah, I might have a conflict on that one because of the money I took for the last campaign of mine.
So we'll check calendars.
So we need, we need another person, I guess is what I'm saying by, for that meeting.
Yeah.
Possibly.
So we'll, we'll do a check-in in a couple of weeks to see where everybody's at. You know, hopefully we'll have, you know, District 5 seat is, we're waiting for that to be filled, there's a possibility that could be filled by that time, and then also, you know, hopefully the other commissioners will be returning as well, so thanks for the heads-up. Sue will check in when we get closer to that date. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let me see, at this time, we can accept any public comment from anybody in the audience that has something they want to say that's not on the agenda today. Is there anybody that has an item that they wanted to bring up that's not on the agenda? Not seeing any motion, then we'll move on with our agenda. And the next item is the consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda, which is the extension of time for the hidden ravine estates here in Auburn. And this would be an extension for two years. Is there anybody that would like to pull this item? Seeing none, then I'll be looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Chairman, prior to doing that, check with the public for public comment?
If somebody wants, if somebody wants to pull it off.
Or check with the public whether or not anybody wants to.
Yeah, I thought I was asking the public, but I didn't see any action, so I'm assuming there's nobody in the public that wants to pull that item off?
Right.
Okay. And this is the only item that's on the consent agenda today. Okay, we have a motion?
Second motion.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Arcuri?
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, let me see, time-wise, we're just right. And so our timed item is the proposal for a conditional use permit for the Placer County Emergency Shelter. And so we have Nikki, who is going to come forward and represent the planning department with the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Nikki Stregan with the Planning Services Division here today to present the conditional use permit for the Placer County.
Let me see, I didn't mention your last name, it's Stregan, right?
Stregan, yes. So the applicant, of course, is requesting a conditional use permit. It is for a limited term, for a five-year term, for an emergency shelter here at the Government Center. By way of background, before I get into my very first slide, in February of 2015, the Board approved a temporary conditional use permit to allow a shelter on the county premises. Later, it was modified in 2015 to allow some operational changes, and then again, it was extended for one year and expires on March 31st of this year. Earlier in the year, in January, the Board adopted an ordinance to add emergency shelters as an allowable land use in heavy commercial, industrial, and industrial park zone districts, and as such, the use permit is before your commission today. I wanted to clarify the action before the commission today because the, the operating agreement is tied to this project, the Board of Supervisors is the, the hearing body for that item, therefore, they would be taking the, the final action on the conditional use permit. And then to clarify, of course, the operating agreement outlines obligations, regulations, and requirements between the operator and the county to run this facility. So let's take a look at the project. You can see here, let me orient you first, does this pointer, this pointer does work well. Grass Valley Highway, or Highway 49 runs here north to south, Bell Road and Atwood Road east to west. All of the parcels that are shown in red represent the entire 200-acre Government Center campus, and then the subject parcel, which is 110 acres, is shown right here in the middle. You can see the project site, little hard to see, but it's a, a black star right here shows where the, the project is located. We'll take a closer look at some of the surrounding zone districts and the zoning here in just a moment, but adjacent uses, looking on this aerial, are industrial storage, office, and medical uses. So taking a look at the zoning for this project, again, the star shows where the project site is located. Uniquely, this parcel is divided between two zone districts, so heavy commercial to the south, and then office professional, that's combining development reserve, combining design corridor to the north, and of course, we're in a building that is on that northern part of the parcel. And then immediately to the east, or northeast, I should say, is commercial plan development zoning, and then to the east of the parcel is residential multifamily and residential single-family zoning. To the south is a combination of office professional and residential multifamily zoning right down here, and then, of course, to the west is more heavy commercial zoning, this, of course, is where some other county services, county facilities are located. In looking at the site map, the red dashed line essentially shows where the project will take place. Let's see, so the, the main building, 303 AB, is roughly 17,000 square, there's roughly 17,000 square feet of, of use in this space, indoor space, and then there's about 6,000 square feet of outdoor courtyard spaces, you can see those shown right here, and then right here. This courtyard area here is actually the entrance for, for the shelter. The general public enters through this walkway right here, which leads to sort of an intake area and some office space, but the, the homeless individuals who come to stay for the night actually come into this courtyard area, which has a gate, and they, they sort of remain in this area while they go through the intake process, and we'll talk a little bit more about that intake process in just a moment. Other types of uses here obviously include the sleeping areas, there is a small classroom, there's a dining facility that's up here, it has a, a space to prepare food, not a commercial kitchen, but a space to prepare food, then there's laundry, bathroom, and showering facilities and so forth. You can also see the, the parking in this site map. Shelter staff parking is designated in this area here, and then parking for volunteers, and then some of the clients who do happen to have cars is available on E and F avenues here in here. So in, in looking at an overview of the project description, the shelter houses two client types. One client type is enrolled in supportive services, and the other client type is just seeking shelter without those services. These latter client type are referred to as overflow, part of the overflow operation. The overflow is a first-come, first-serv operation where individuals are just seeking basic needs like for sleep, showers, and meals, and then other clients predominantly remain on campus to seek services that they are enrolled in, are actively seeking permanent housing, employment, and they're sort of a proactive engagement and relationship with these individuals, again, actively enrolled in supportive services offered by the Health and Human Services Department. If space is available, some of the overflow clients can become a part of the supportive services component, and the, the ultimate goal here is to find individuals housing within a six-month period. I, I think I've covered bullet points one and two. The, the facility itself is, is proposed to accommodate 100 people, and that includes shelter staff, that's three staff that are, two staff that are there, and then a manager who's either on-call or onsite, that's in accordance with our zoning ordinance and part of the project proposal. That leaves 97 clients to serve as part of the shelter. We also talked about some of the basic services there, sleeping accommodations, meals, bathroom, shower, laundry, when we looked at the previous site plan. Referrals and access to services is also something that occurs on, as part of the project, and that includes mental health, substance abuse treatment, medical care, legal services, public assistance, job training. These are all services that fall within the definition of the emergency shelter within our zoning ordinance. In terms of impacts that they cause by way of traffic, noise, et cetera, they, they cause little impact in that way, because many of these things take place on our campus already. And then finally, I've noted here, the permit term is for five years, as I mentioned when I first opened my comments, and that is, of course, because staff is engaged in actively looking for an alternative site, and a five-year term was what the applicant had determined was necessary to find that site. So in looking more closely at some of the existing land uses and essential services surrounding the project site, the immediate, the immediate surrounding land uses include professional office, industrial, medical, and storage facilities. In terms of government services, that's immediately what is in the area, that's, that includes building maintenance, surplus, the county courtyard is right across the street from the entrance, there are some ag commission offices that are in proximity, and then, of course, within 1,000 feet of the shelter are Health and Human Services facilities, such as the Adult System of Care. I will go a little out of order here, the Adult System of Care provides mental health, substance abuse, and other medical and counseling aid. Additionally, public transportation is, it's identified in the zoning ordinance as a service that, that shelters are encouraged to be in proximity to, and the, the site is within 700 feet of the nearest bus stop. And then, there are residential and school land uses in the area, and I think this is where, you know, we've heard a lot from the community about some of the challenges with this land use. The nearest residential land use is within 500 feet of the shelter, and then the nearest school is within 1,000 feet of the proposed shelter. So in looking at neighborhood compatibility and analyzing neighborhood compatibility, we, we look at the surrounding land uses, which include government uses, and they, they create a buffer, to some extent, from these other sensitive land uses. We also look at what is currently on the Government Center site, and those include the supportive services that Health and Human Services have provided for, for many years, and have been utilized by the mentally ill, the disabled, substance abusers, and the homeless for over 20 years. The zoning ordinance also identifies the need to submit a neighborhood management plan, which outlines how the shelter operator will communicate with neighbors, and then a security plan, which basically outlines how the site will be made as safe as possible. So we'll talk about those in more detail in the next two slides. I want to also mention the Homeless Community Liaison Program, and that program is a collaboration between resources with the Sheriff's Office, the probation office, and Health and Human Services, and it is a team comprised of four deputies, two Health and Human Services practitioners, and probation officers who are actively in the field contacting, documenting, and tracking homeless individuals to connect them with essential services. I was at a forum that Supervisor Holmes hosted a couple of weeks ago, and at that forum, probation, Health and Human Services, Sheriff's Office was on a panel, and, and in listening to that forum, I, I learned two things. One, of course, the mission of the Homeless Community Liaison Program is to improve the lives of homeless individuals on the streets, and then proactively address safety concerns of the community. And the second thing I learned is that there appear, there seems to be a meaningful response from this program, and I think the Sheriff's Office has, has spoken to that quite a bit in, in the public forum in the, in the last few, few months. So in looking at the neighborhood relation plans, the components of this include a requirement for the operator to provide their information, provide contact information to be available for feedback, complaints, and other general information about the operations of the shelter. Additionally, they would be required to log complaints and their responses, and then share those with Health and Human Services staff. The operator and Health and Human Services staff would participate in MAC forums, and staff, this plan also outlines how staff would work with the Sheriff's Office for referrals. Right now, the sheriff can, obviously uses the shelter as a resource and take individuals off the streets and bring them to this sort of preliminary place to seek services, so staff works with them in that regard. And then training is, is also identified in the Neighborhood Relations Plan. In terms of emergency protocol, they obviously rely on the Sheriff's Office as a resource, but other, other training to create a, a secure and safe environment is also identified in this plan. Looking at the security plan, lighting and cameras are installed at entrance and exit points to the shelter. We talked a little bit about intake procedures, or rather, you saw on that aerial map, the courtyard area is where intake occurs, and, and part of the, the process, the sort of controlled process to intake means massing everyone in that courtyard area, and then they go through a bag inspection, they go through a process whereby the, if, if they're intoxicated or showing signs of, of being on drugs, they are tested for that and denied entry if they test positive, and they also collect data at that point. HHS and the operator are, are working to collaborate, to collect information on people, like basic demographics, certain services that they're currently enrolled in, if they're veterans, you know, information like that, they, they try to collect as much information on them as possible to make decisions about services in the future. Then finally, part of the security plan is that residents aren't allowed alcohol, drugs, weapons, et cetera, and they sign rules of conduct to this effect. This, this slide probably should really be titled "Community Input and the North Auburn MAC Recommendation," so I want to talk, talk a little bit about that meeting, and then a little bit about some of the input that we've received from the community so far. The North Auburn MAC took place a couple of weeks ago, and it was attended by about 20 individuals, which included the project applicant, Health and Human Services staff, the shelter operator was in attendance, and then members of the community. The MAC has organized an ad hoc committee, which represent the interests of the community and aim to address community concerns with the shelter. The group presented nine recommendations at this meeting, and those are attached in your staff report. It is, my understanding that Health and Human Services will be addressing each of these nine recommendations when the operating agreement is presented to the Board of Supervisors, but I did want to talk about one in particular that pertains to the zoning ordinance, and that is a minimum staffing requirement. The ordinance does identify a, a standard, a development standard for minimum sta, minimum staffing, and the project achieves that standard. However, I, I do know, again, that Health and Human Services staff will be doing some research and on other standards around the region to see how that, you know, matches with what the ad hoc committee is, is looking for. Staff also received correspondence after the staff report was posted last week, and this letter was signed by 28 households in the surrounding neighborhoods particularly concerned with environmental review. And that letter states that the zoning text amendment was adopted under the premise that any CUP would undergo environmental review. And I wanted to identify that environmental review under the SEQA process doesn't preclude staff from determining that a project is categorically exempt and falls under one of the categorical exemptions in the SEQA statute. As such, staff did determine that the project would qualify under a Class 1 categorical exemption for existing facilities, and the reasoning behind that exemption is outlined in the staff report, and I'll reiterate some of that. One, that the physical building is existing and no permanent changes are proposed to the building. Two, that the project is not an expansion of use because it has been used to house large groups of people in the past. And then, three, that the shelter was established to address an existing homeless problem in North Auburn that predates the shelter. So looking at the MAC recommendation, you can see here that they made a motion to recommend that the commission approve the conditional use permit as proposed, with the added recommendation that the shelter be subject to annual review, and then also that the commission forward to the Board of Supervisors the recommendations submitted by the ad hoc committee for homelessness and public safety. And again, that's that, those nine recommendations shown in attachment E in your staff report. So finally, in looking at staff's recommendation, you know, in evaluating the project site and obviously the description of the project with the addition of the Neighborhood Relations Plan and some strategies out there to increase safety in the community, and then also looking at surrounding land uses that buffer this project, the DRC recommends that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to find the conditional use permit categorically exempt from environmental review. That's in accordance with SEQA Guideline Section 15301, County Code Chapter 18, Section 1836030, and approve the conditional use permit for a maximum of five years, subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer some questions for you.
Yeah. Nicky.
Oh, sorry.
I was just going to say, I don't, I have several questions, I don't know whether they should be for you, is the operator here as well?
We have, we have shelter operator in the room, we have the Department of Public Works in the room, on behalf of the county, they are the applicant, and then Health and Human Services is also in the room, so.
Okay, my questions are probably more for the operator.
Or maybe the applicant.
For the applicant, yeah.
We'll give, we'll have a chance.
Nikki, the nine, the nine recommendations by the MAC, it's eight pages, so they had additional comments behind those, that one page had nine, is staff in agreement with all those?
Well, what we did was, we really were trying to evaluate this project as it pertains to land use and the zoning ordinance, and we looked through those conditions and, and rather, the recommendations and saw them as a, a fit for the operating agreement. I don't, I mean, I'm not sure if HHS or DPW wants to speak to that, but they are being analyzed as part of the operating agreement.
Okay, and we can.
Mr. Chair.
We can address that during the public comment period, the recommendations there. Any other questions? I do have one. Let me see, I guess I'm a little bit confused about attachment B, C, and the operating agreement. You see, the operating agreement apparently is something that's being drafted currently and hasn't been disclosed in at least our information or part of our information so far. Is that correct?
That's correct. I'll.
Okay. And so, so we're not really addressing the elements of the operating agreement today?
Mr. Chair, maybe I can provide a little clarity here. The commission is considering the land use request only, and that would be whether to grant a conditional use permit to allow shelter to operate for the proposed term of five years. And as the staff report points out, there are two other integral components of the, of this use, but not as part of the land use, and that being the site access agreement or whatever agreement will be reached as to eventual operator of the shelter utilizing county property, and the other one is the operating agreement as to how the shelter operator would operate the shelter within the county building. Those two agreements are with, the site access is with DPWFS, and the operating agreement is with HHS, they're representatives here for both. The recommendations of the MAC were forwarded over both to the attorney in our office, who represents HHS, as well as HHS, to look at that in terms of how that might meld with the operating agreement. So what you have right now before you is the question of whether to grant the use permit. So what you have right now before you is the question of whether to grant the use permit, which is, after the zoning text amendment, the integral component of the land use side of things in order to allow shelter to remain there or to have another operator operate a shelter within that use. It's one of, it's an unusual circumstance for the commission that it's looking at one component, but that is what we're asking you to do, is look at strictly the land use component, that being whether it's consistent with the general plan, consistent with the zoning, and whether you can make the findings for the grant of the conditional use permit.
Okay. Any questions on that point?
It just seems a little confusing. I'm trying to figure out, how do you, how do we approve or not approve the use of something without having any idea of an operation?
Okay. Well, yeah, we'll have time to hear from the public on that particular point, so that opportunity will be here.
Question then, would it be inappropriate if we made a motion on this later that it also includes some recommendations of things that we think should be included in the operating agreement? Or is that not?
The recommendation you're making is on the land use component. Now, recognizing that the MAC did have recommendations with staff, which staff concluded were more akin to the operating agreement versus the use permit, if the commission would like to provide comments to the board, separate and apart from the land use determination, you certainly may. But we're keeping this, in essence, separated for a reason, because the land use really is its own separate component with its own separate set of conditions. One, of course, recognizing that one of the conditions is to have both of these agreements in place before any operation would start. To the extent that you feel it would be relevant for the board's consideration of those agreements to add extra comments, we certainly have staff forward those on. That should not be part of your determination on the land use component.
Okay. Thank you. Let me see, another question I have, it might be somewhat related. We have attachments B and C, and I do see in the draft conditional use permit that C is referenced, but I don't see that B is referenced. And just for the audience purposes, B is a security plan and C is a neighborhood relations plan. So I guess what I'm inferring here is that Attachment C is actually part of the conditional use permit, but Attachment B must be part of the proposed operating plan? I don't know. So maybe you could kind of clarify.
Right, and I actually, to include Attachment B, the safety plan, rather, it is called a security plan, in the conditions of approval wouldn't be, I don't think that would be a problem. It's, it should be referenced in the conditions of approval.
So both those, both B and C would be part, you know, I mean, is, we would consider those when we're making our decision as part of the conditional use permit?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any more questions, or?
I would recommend, Chairman, that maybe you have the applicant, GP, you know, FW, get up and speak to the.
Oh, yeah, I was going to give the applicant a chance to speak. I know this is kind of a unique situation where we have the Planning Department do the Planning Department talk, but if you're through, Nicky, then we'll invite the applicant forward, and the applicant works for the county too, so we have county and county here.
A little bit different than usual.
Yeah.
Good morning, Chair, members of the commission. My name's Ken Graham, I'm with the Department of Public Works and Facilities, and today we're asking you for a positive recommendation to the board on our proposed limited term, which is a five-year term for a conditional use permit, to continue operating the current homeless shelter into the future, at least for that five-year time period. So we're the five-year time period. What I've heard from our board and through the process, this has been very open for the last couple of years as we've been operating that, is that this is not the right place for the shelter. But there is a need for shelter services, and until we have that future shelter, something needs to remain, and this is probably the only option available today until that future date comes about. We do have a parallel process moving forward to look at alternative sites and working with some different people. It's a process of casting a net, it is not a simple process, it's going to be a very difficult one, which is why we're asking for the five-year term. Very unusual. Usually when we ask for a use permit, we ask for it to go essentially forever, or as long as we comply with the conditions of approval. But we realize here, there's been a concern from the community about this not being here. I think the board's been clear, it will not be here forever, which is why we're looking for the five-year term. In fact, the board just, a couple days ago, approved, it proved in concept, although we're still going to go through an environmental review process, for a new master plan for the government center here. There is no provision being made for a homeless shelter here on the government center site. But with that being said, there is still need for that services for some period of time. Five years, you know, why five years? Why not five months, five days, five decades? I think the idea is, it will take some time to identify a site, go through a community process to determine or to narrow down the potential sites to one that we can actually do, look to acquire it, eventually entitle it, environmental review it, and then renovate a building if there's a building on it, or build a new building. That is not going to happen in a short period of time. In fact, that first part, trying to cast the net and trying to get some sites that people can get behind is probably going to prove difficult. There's always going to be somebody who doesn't want it in that particular location. So we don't want to be coming back every year or every whatever period of time. We want to have the time to be able to do it, get it done, and then be able to move on, hence the five-year time period. The intent of the use permit today is to really continue the operations we have going on there today, which have morphed over time, which is, I think, very important that we continue to adapt to make it the best that it can be. We are talking about continuing to serve 100 people. We are talking about having 24/7 operations, which has changed over time. In the original beginning, you know, we were having people leave during the day. That doesn't work as well, and we wanted to be able to connect people to services, so letting people stay in means they have a place to be instead of being out on the street. We thought that ended up being good for the community, as well as our ultimate goal about getting them the services they need so they can find permanent housing. We do have some of the things mentioned in the security plan, the neighborhood plan. What I want to make sure people understand, our whole idea with the use permit was to try to create a box, and then the idea of that box is, we could have different operators. We have one today, could be a different one next year, next month, next whatever the case may be. This is for a five-year, or we're estimating a five-year time period, or a maximum five-year time period. We want to create that box, create some parameters for which anybody who does operate has to operate within that box, but there's still some variability that people, a different operator could do it a little different way, accomplish the same thing. So again, we want to provide some openness to be able to do some different things, some flexibility, but make sure it fits within certain parameters. So that's what we have in the proposed conditional use permit. We are, again, talking about this other process is going on at the same time. I don't ever want to lose sight of that. There are two concurrent processes, so people realize that. And we will be following this up with working on towards, for us, it's going to be a site access agreement in some form, whatever the operator is, getting them access to our current building. And HHS will be working with them on an operating agreement, and in both of those agreements there will be additional provisions about how that operator or that individual will work to operate this shelter. And so we are open to that. We've heard a lot of the good ideas that came out from the North Auburn MAC. There's always some question about exactly how do you implement those, but they were good ideas, and I think for the most part, in some form, most of those are going to be able to be accommodated, and I think Jeff Brown will be able to speak to more about some of the specifics on those items. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Let me see, I guess I have one thing kind of running through my mind, and a few years ago, we looked at this issue, not in light of the current problems, but looked at the issue, and at that time, we came up with some zoning, which included multifamily residential, light commercial, and medium commercial. And part of the thinking that we were presented with at that time is that the people that would need the services of a homeless shelter needed to have access, like we've heard, to transportation, buses, they needed to have access to, or fairly close access to grocery stores, groceries. And we also heard that they needed to be fairly close to services. And so, you know, sometimes you can look at sites that are way out of town, and they may not qualify when you think particularly that a lot of the services that serve the homeless are right here at the DeWitt Center. So I guess, how does that all come together in your mind in terms of where we're going in the future? And like you're saying, I mean, the existing shelter isn't going to work in the future, but a lot of the needs that it's providing for are actually here at DeWitt. So how's that balance in your mind?
Very fair question, and it is all about trying to find the balance. What we've heard is, traditionally in this county, we've allowed them in multifamily and commercial to be as close as possible to the services that they provide, and I think they have to be within some proximity to those services. We've also heard strong from the community here, but also other communities, that, but they don't want it so close to their residential uses or the local businessmen, and so a lot of people are trying to have them be in more industrialized, commercialized area. Can those be working at pulling against each other? Absolutely. I think we are looking, and I think there are possibilities of finding something where there's the balance, which means you try to find it in an area that's far enough away. We actually have some mapping, I guess I can probably share it, because it probably goes directly to what you're saying.
I have a.
Uh-oh, maybe there's something else that needs to be done. So forget that for a moment. Maybe we'll come back to that, about some of the process we're going through and what it looks like. And what we find is, most of the industrialized, commercialized areas in our, in particularly the North Auburn area, are fairly small and adjacent to residential areas. They're not way out in the hinterlands, they're on the adjacency to these areas. It is about balance. I'm not here to say what that balance is today. Oh, here we go, that was quick. So just so you know, the process we're going through now, and it is an iterative process about casting a net, seeing what you have, and then reevaluating that. This shows a map of when we first went and just said, all right, what, where are the areas that are zoned today? This is based on the zoning text, the zoning text amendment that was approved, what, back in January? And it shows all the areas that currently are zoned that could handle a shelter. Doesn't say those are all applicable sites, doesn't say anything else. But we heard really deep in the community that, hey, you know, we want to keep it away from schools, licensed daycare centers, residential areas, and so we started doing some casting the net again in a little different way with more screening material. We came up and said, well, what if we set 1,000 feet? Because I've kind of heard that number out there. What happens if we do 1,000 feet away? What would it look like? Well, all of a sudden, all those yellow areas that were possibilities start narrowing down tremendously. That's a problem. In fact, in addition to that, the purple line you see up there, that's the airport overflight zone, or most of the overflight zones, that the city of Auburn and the Airport Land Use Commission is working towards saying, we don't think it's appropriate to have a shelter in that area. So there may be another impediment, not saying impossible, but impediment to doing anything in the purple. So if you do that, there are only very few, there's a couple places there, there, whoop, and way down here, and I'm not even sure those little parcels are big enough to even house a shelter, because they're like literally a portion of a parcel. So we said, all right, well, maybe that net is a little bit too big, that we may not be able to make that work. What's something else we could do? So we said, what about 500 feet? What would that look like? And this is what 500 foot looks like. You start picking up some more areas. I don't want to say we're limiting to this. What we're looking at right now is looking at the I-80 corridor, are there things that between zoning, or things that we think can make sense? We are continually going to cast that net, but it is very difficult. It is hard to find something that stays 1,000 feet away, that fits within a zoning, that has all these different things. At some point, something's going to have to be, to give, to find a site that is the most appropriate, although not perfectly appropriate. I don't know if that answered a question, maybe long-winded.
Yeah, I think you've, Alan, answered the challenge that you have. And I was just thinking of another question, but it'll come back later.
Sure.
Any other questions, folks? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open it up to public comment, and I see a lot of people are going to have public comments. Raise your hand if you're going to have a public comment.
Hi there, my name is.
Just a minute, just a minute.
Can we just line up?
Well, what I'm thinking about is, I think we need to have about a three-minute limit.
That's fine.
Is that fine?
Well, with me, I don't know.
I'll take whatever she doesn't use.
Okay.
There we go.
And so, at any rate, we'd like you to give us your name.
My name is Julie Cannon.
And I guess we don't have a sign-in here. I don't know, do we need a sign-in? Okay. And so, at any rate, we'll do that. I'll ask you all to line up so that we don't have a big period of time in between commenters to wait, but, so it's Julie, you say?
Julie, yes.
Okay, Julie, you can go ahead and start, you'll have about three minutes.
I live in this area, and I believe that a lot of people who are coming up here and speaking so eloquently as to why we should randomly allow this place to be here for five more years, they're very well at, you know, making it sound nice, and this is why, and this, you know. There's no reason, there is no reason, there is so much risk with this situation. There are families at stake, the county has an obligation to the people around in the area. We are not being listened to. We have come time and time and time again, I have brought my baby since she was an infant and said, please, listen to us. We are not being listened to. There are many risk factors that I cannot list in three minutes. We've been sending emails, we've been on public forums, on social media, speaking and debating, and people are getting upset. These are our lives at stake. I have my child with me here. If we have this for five years, she's two, she will not be able to go outside and ride her bike, learn how to ride a bike, for the next five years. She is in the house until she's seven, until we find out what else we're going to do. There was just someone in my neighborhood, on my street, last night, knocking on people's doors. The sheriff had to be called. This is hitting us close to home. We are not out here, we're not, this is not NIMBYism. This is genuine concern, okay? And I cannot plead with anyone enough, you, you, everyone speaks to this. I realize this is your professional job, you are very good at speaking about this, you are very good at taking a situation and turning it into something that looks pretty and fluffy and rainbows and unicorns, but it's not, okay? I don't know where you live.
Please address the commission.
I don't know where all of these people live, but this is affecting all of us, okay? And if we don't do what's right right now, we're going to have much bigger, bigger problems. This is spiraling, and I plead with you to listen to us. Thank you.
Julie, can I, Julie, can I ask you, Julie, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Do you live south of Atwood?
I live off of Atwood.
But is it south, on the other side of the street?
Yes.
Okay, I was just kind of getting kind of an idea where people are living.
Yeah, I, I'm not comfortable going to the grocery store, I'm not comfortable, this is creating anxiety in all of the residents in our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hello, my name is Scott Holbrook. Many of you may know me, I have been a longtime server on the Auburn Area Recreation District Board of Directors. I'm obviously representing myself, I am a neighbor of this. I tell you, I feel like I'm living in a movie. It seems like the Twilight Zone sometimes, more often than not, it's the nightmare on F Street. Every single one of us here cares about our neighbors, our fellow people, and we want to help them. But the whole way this has been handled is so wrong. Anyone that's followed it would just shake their heads. Oh, just a temporary thing to keep people out of the cold. Oh, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Oh, a 90-day extension. It's a joke. This is not how public agencies work, but it's not funny, because lives are seriously, seriously, seriously being impacted negatively. Site agreements have been disregarded from day one. Weapons and drugs and otherwise have been getting in that shelter. I've witnessed their check-in procedures. We have minimum wage kids here with no serious training. The VLA has proven incompetent over and over and over again. We even misrepresent facts to the Auburn Journal. You know, it's, we're getting smoke blown up, our proverbial, day after day. The reality of it is, a few years ago, this gift to the community, the DeWitt Center, had a childhood daycare center, a family recreation facility, a senior center, a professional. had a childhood daycare center, a family recreation facility, a senior center, a performing arts center for our kids, all that the BOS took away from us, kicked them out. Now, the buildings just sit there empty, but they're well-known to the sheriffs, who regularly there now having to deal with people breaking in, burglarizing them. Okay, you get numbers, I can challenge any single number, be it from Jeff Brown, Marshall Hopper, otherwise, and all the benefits. We've been transitioning people, we've been helping people. We're not ignorant, stupid people. We've lived here for over 20 years, we know what's been in the situation. They're telling you, "Oh, hey, approve this, while we work on that, and we're going to work here." But bottom line, Ken Glenn said it right. This is not the right place, all right? This is dangerous. The number of crimes inside, I mean, we, the shelter directors no longer there, there's allegations of drug use in there, sexual, sexual and propriety and otherwise. You have testimony of drugs being stolen, it's just incredible. The crime reports speak for themselves. What is happening inside and outside that shelter, be them by shelter guests or people that come there? 1,000 feet? That's a joke. Anyone that would want a high-risk shelter would want to be able to house sex offenders. You can't do that at 1,000 feet. Yet, sex offenders come, even if they're turned away, where do they go? They still walk by our schools. You don't put a shelter that houses parolees, criminals, mentally ill, known addicts, that close to our families, schools, our family homes. No longer can kids ride their bike. We could do that three years ago, we could do that much longer. They cannot do that now. I mean, it's just sad, sad, sad. Every single person sitting there that is approved and pushed for this negativity in our community should be ashamed. We have right-hand of Auburn members covering up information. It's ugly, it's bad, it's wrong. Do not issue a permit for this, please.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Laura Strosser, and I live right across from the homeless shelter, and I also have a law practice in Old Town Auburn. You're being asked today to approve a permanent CUP for a five-year period to allow the current shelter to remain where it is. In doing so, you're also being asked to consider and make recommendations to the board that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review under CEQA, and I'm requesting that you not consider it exempt. CEQA sets forth a legal standard for reviewing the appropriateness of a negative declaration. Courts have held that a neg-dec is appropriate if it can be fairly argued that the project may cause significant environmental impacts. The fair argument standard creates a low threshold for requiring preparation of an EIR, which is appropriate in this case. A fair argument exists that back in October, you were asked to approve the neg-dec prepared by the county staff for the zoning text amendment that allowed zoning for the shelter at DeWitt Center. The neg-dec done at that time was a program-level CEQA analysis, not a project-level CEQA analysis, specific to this shelter. In other words, the neg-dec done at that time had to do with all the proposed zones overall, not just the independent project of the shelter where it's at currently. It concluded that there was no environmental impact to the zones being analyzed, but it based that conclusion on the assumption and the expectation that any future development of the shelter would require a CUP and further environmental review specific to the independent project of this shelter site. This is evidenced by the fact that in that neg-dec, it repeatedly stated in 11 different categories that a future shelter would require environmental review of the shelter as an independent project. It was represented to you back then that any future CUP application would be subject to further environmental review. Now that a CUP application is before you, so should a further environmental review be before you. An environmental review specific to the shelter will likely produce very different results than what you saw before, including aesthetics, hazards, traffic, including pedestrian versus auto incidents on Atwood and 49, and especially the land used to impact in evaluating whether this project is incompatible with the surrounding use of land being so close to schools, businesses, and homes. These environmental impacts have not been adequately analyzed, properly mitigated, or publicly disclosed. The county is presenting an inadequate CEQA determination due to the failure to analyze the project-level impacts, as well as the failure to consider the effects of urban decay, which is the process where a previously functioning city fails, fails because of disrepair and abandonment. Plenty has been presented and will be presented today by residents and businesses that show how this has occurred and around the current shelter use. So, I request that you revise the CEQA determination for this project by studying the impacts of allowing a homeless shelter this close in proximity to homes, schools, and businesses, and respond to these claims to evaluate urban decay impacts in order to properly satisfy CEQA and allow for the required public review process. Thank you.
I got to follow that.
Yeah, I was going to say, are you an attorney?
Look, I'm just a homeowner, I'm a dad, I live over here across of, across Atwood, Kevin Clifton, sorry, 2210 Ranch House, right over by the elementary school. I was just taking some notes while they were talking, and they said it's, they've taken 100 homeless per night, or per day, or whatever it is, they turn the rest away. Well, where do they go? They've been ending up on our street, by the school, knocking on doors, stealing stuff, fighting, yelling at people, they're, it's been bad. The extension, five years? You need five years to come up with another spot? If you give the government five years, still do five years and request another extension, take another five? That creates no urgency. Make it two if you have to do something. Make it one, they can keep coming back, explaining why they haven't found something. A buffer, I heard that twice. I have little kids, the first lady you mentioned, ride their bikes, play outside, they want to go on walks, they want to go exploring in the woods out there, maybe off a camper like I did as a kid. Well, they can't, because we don't know who's living out there, right? A buffer? These people walk hundreds of miles. They don't care about walking across the street, especially if there's something good over there, right? A buffer, that's nonsense, a buffer. Homeless Community Liaison, that sounds like money, right? Is that a position that's created because that's here? Maybe those resources could be better used if the homeless place wasn't there. Maybe the sheriff could find better things to do with their time than police a bunch of homeless people that we brought in, right? Maybe there's other things they could, they would rather do, probably. You could probably ask them, they'd probably say yes. She said that drunks, people that are drunk or on drugs or show that they're somehow affected or turned away, well, where do they go? Right? They probably show up towards the evening when they want a place to sleep, they're on drugs, "Oh, you can't come in. Go sleep in the neighborhood across the street by the school." And then, I guess I'm here so I got the last notice, but it feels like a lot of the notices and, and all the talking and working about this have been kind of done in, I don't want to say secret, but it's been kept pretty quiet, probably to mitigate resistance from all of us, and we're starting to catch on, and we're all here, okay? We're following them, we're tracking. And that's all I have to say. Just please, consider all this in your recommendation. Maybe if they need an extension, give them a year.
Okay, thank you.
You did a good job, by the way.
Yeah. Always.
Hi, I'm Lisa Langren, I live on Atwood, across from the car wash, can't miss my house. I've been doing this since day one, since it's opened, and I can tell you, I do have some concerns. You're going to hear a lot from the community today, they just don't have any trust anymore. I think that unfortunately, it started off on a bad note, there was poor man, there is poor management in the shelter, that hasn't helped our situation. Also, being a community member on the committee for finding a new location, I have a lot of concern. There are not a lot of areas that is going to satisfy the community, and the area below on the left-hand corner at the bottom, that's like the O-for area. So, let's say we put them out there. Well, I've already been told we're not providing transportation, so what are we doing? We can't put them way out there, there's, like you said, no grocery stores, no services like that. So, we're asking for additional five years, which I get, I understand, because it is going to be a huge challenge, such a huge challenge that I don't see it. I don't see it happening. So, to me, by you guys approving this, it's just kind of giving me okay to keep it there forever. And I know, I know the board supervisor, and I know everybody's saying, no, they want to move it, the community says, "Let's move it, let's move it." But I'm telling you, I've seen the maps, I've been on the committees, I've been here since day one, I'm just not seeing it. I am not seeing it compatible in North Auburn, or if in Auburn at all. Not that I don't want it, I just, you know, I've been on, I've been on the situation where I don't want the shelter at all. Well, then I realized, that's not going to happen. So, I jumped sides, and I said, "Okay, if we're going to have to have it, I want to have, I want to have some input." You know, I want to make some of the rules. I see it every day, I see everybody walk past my house, it's inevitable. So, let's, let's put some stuff in there in recommendation." And that's what I did. I got on the committee and did that. But now, being on this committee, finding a new location, I'm telling you, I do not see it. Unless there's some miracle that's going to happen, it's not going to happen. And if we do the airport zoning, and let me tell you something, those airport people have already had a fit, and money talks, and those people have money, so it's not going there. So, I ask you to consider that when you're approving this. You know, if I knew there was a location that would be feasible and would work, then I'm all for this, but there's really not. And unfortunately, with the community and all the other issues going on, it's just a matter of loss of trust. If VOA would have done it correctly from day one, we wouldn't be here right now, and I just ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori, I live in Sullivan Ranch. I also have a business on Palm, which is quite a few miles down the road. I keep hearing about the space, 500 feet, 1,000 feet. I don't need to go into, and these people are doing a very good job as to why it shouldn't be in these little locations. I live two miles away, my business is two and a half miles away, and I'm still affected by it. They walk down New Airport and pass Sullivan Ranch daily. As a matter of fact, I was driving through here, and then my son in the car, my 15-year-old said, "The guy who was walking down our street, which is right behind Sullivan Ranch, my son tells me, 'Mom, whip around, that guy does not look safe, whip around.'" Because my special-needs daughter, who is 26, is home right now alone. And so, my son says, "Whip around," and he, and that's, hence why I was late here, because we whipped around to make sure that that guy wasn't stopping as he was looking over his shoulder as I was driving away from my house. My house looks like it's abandoned for the day, as if I'm going to work. That's a concern for me. I just moved my business to Palm, I have never seen anything like it in my life. I'm there painting and doing other things throughout the day, trying to get this thing together. I've had guys walk on in, they're in their 20s and 30s, these are, you're not, you're chronic homeless who need a roof. These guys have backpacks on their backs, and they come in, they want to know about the wine on my wall, they come in, they want to know my name, they start, I've had to kindly ask them to walk out and please leave. I have one that comes by every day and stops and stares in my window. That's going to affect my business, and I certainly am not going to bring my children there. If I walk into the bathroom, we lock the door. My staff knows, lock the door if you go to the restroom. That's not a way to live. So, this 500 feet, 1,000 feet, to me, we need to find a place far away, because these guys walk, they bike, they bus. I don't think that this 500 feet thing really is credible. I have another issue. I am very concerned about VOA. I'm sure a lot of people in this room know what I know, or have seen what I have started to expose. I've been very closely related to somebody who has been part of this little scandal. I know that there's been an email that I sent to Leo. Actually, the email went to the head of VOA about two weeks ago, and here's what the email that I personally sent. "I have incredibly concerning information regarding one of your staff that is a human resource-related issue. Please contact me." She sends back and says, "What exactly is the topic?" I said, "It's very confidential and very sensitive, I'd rather talk to somebody." She then takes my email, forwards it on to Leo and someone else, after I just told her it was very sensitive, and within that second email, I told her it was regarding CPS and the shelter in Auburn. And she sends it on over to Leo. It's clear, I've got some information regarding a VOA employee, an HR employee. And in that, she also said, "Go to the BOS." And I asked her, "Is the BOS trained in HR issues regarding your staff?" And that's when she finally called me. So, this gentleman has had an email in his inbox for probably a week and a half, Leo over here, saying that we've got a serious issue, and this is before he was put on administrative leave. I'm not even sure what he knows still, because the information is still private, because CPS is involved. And he has not reached out to me. I've lost trust now, because I own a business, and I've worked in high-tech Silicon Valley, and if anyone said, "We have a CPS issue, and a very confidential issue, I need someone from Human Resources to call me," they would have not only been on the phone, but with the information I have, actions would have been taken, and they haven't been. So, I am very concerned about VOA running this thing, to be honest with you. So, that also needs to be looked at, because part of the problems here have been who's been running that place. And I have proof, I have proof, and I will be showing it fairly soon, that that person has been on drugs, and not one person at VOA took into consideration that maybe we should drug test him, especially after reading his book where he says, "I know how to manipulate the system, and I know how to pass a drug test."
Could you please-
What company?
Could you discuss your discussion?
Sure. I think we need to not only look at the location, and it needs to be way further than 500 feet or 1,000 feet from all these places that we think that it needs to be away from, but we also need to look at who's running it, because that is probably, the number-one problem has been who's running it.
Thank you.
My name is Dawn, I'm a, I am a former resident of the shelter. I witnessed numerous, numerous amounts of drug use, alcohol consumption, sexual indwinds by staff and by residents. I witnessed extreme violence in the shelter. I personally became feared for my own safety. I mentioned it to the former director of VOA, who's on administrative leave. I also mentioned it to several staff members. I, I've only met Leo twice.
You know, our hearing today is dealing with the land use issue, not personnel issue.
Yes, I, I understand that, but see, you have to understand, I left the shelter, not because I found housing. I currently reside in a motel paying $400 a week, because I am definitely afraid of the shelter and its residents. My daughter, who's back there, who is physically disabled, went to the shelter, because I was a victim of circumstance. I am not a drug addict, I'm not an alcoholic, I do not have mental issues, I am a victim of circumstance. But you do not, maybe you have never been to the shelter. It's very, very bad. I've witnessed horrible, horrible things. I cannot, I cannot express enough for the shelter to be someplace, or to be directed by somebody else, or something, I, I really don't know, but I'm telling you, you, they say, "Oh, we searched the bags, and we do this, and we do that." That is a bunch of baloney. They do not do that. That is, that, I have, I have witnessed staff members sneaking into, into the storage room to sleep, and couldn't care less about what goes on in the shelter. Most of the staff members are under 20, maybe 30 years old.
Yeah, I, I hear your discussion on the, the staffing and the staff operations, but-
But I seriously-
Could you please finish your comments?
Um, I, yes, I, I understand, my time is almost up, but I am here to tell this board, VOA is not the answer. It, it has to be somebody else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Oxley, I grew up in North Auburn, and I'm currently- I grew up in North Auburn, and I'm currently part of a family business in North Auburn. I want to first point out that trying to shut Dawn down and her experience at the shelter is part of this problem. I'm going to keep it short and sweet. This has been an epic failure from day one, the first day those doors were open. When do we admit defeat? Do we take this for five more years? Auburn is turning into a cesspool. I shop in Roseville now, as do many other people. I don't feel safe. We have had, you guys know. You know the stories. And if you can sit back there and do this with a clear conscience, when homeowners, schools, children, everyone is being affected by this, and you guys are shutting down the people that can't use the shelter, the people that want to change their lives, that want a clean shelter, that want to be able to sleep and be safe while you're catering to the drug addicts, the sex offenders, the crap, excuse my language, that goes on in that shelter would make your head spin if any one of you went and actually spent a night there. So that's all I have to say. It's utter disgust. This experiment is a failure, and we need to admit it. Five more years? I can't imagine.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Joe Offer, and I'm the president of Placer People of Faith Together. It's, we represent 15 different congregations in Placer County. I'm also a member of St. Teresa of Avila Parish down on Atwood, and I'm there almost every day. I was an employee for a while, and I've been a volunteer for the last 10 years. Placer People of Faith Together has been studying the homeless problem and law enforcement issues in North Auburn for the last five years. Back in 2012, we interviewed 79 homeless people here in North Auburn to see how they were involved in criminal justice problems, what their experiences were in the jail. In the process of our studies, we learned that there was a problem with homelessness in North Auburn way back in 2004. Back then, we used to solve the problem by shipping our homeless people to other counties. And we were found out, and we were stopped. That's no longer allowed. So Placer County developed a 10-year plan to end homelessness, and they published that in 2004, and it's 2017, and we still have a homeless problem in North Auburn. I think that most of the complaints we've heard today are valid. However, I think that the homeless shelter is a partial solution to the problem. I do not think it is a cause of the problem. I've worked several days inside the shelter, serving meals and visiting the shelter and talking with people. Seems to be a very calm, friendly atmosphere inside. People are very receptive. Back before the shelter existed, Gathering In would send a bus up here, and usually the bus would be empty because North Auburn people did not want to go to other places for housing. They wanted to stay here where they come from. And so we might, Gathering In might serve five or six people from North Auburn every night, that's it. Now we have a shelter, and now we're, we're housing 100 people rather than having them out in the streets at night. And I think that's, that's an improvement that we need to preserve. We do need to find a permanent shelter, but for now, I think we ought to keep what we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning. My name is Dave Tostensen. I live in Bell Meadows. I run an engineering company here in the county. I just wanted to address, from a business perspective, it was pointed out that this is a bad location for this type, for this use. We were told that we're looking for another location. So with my business, we develop products. We develop them, we start with nothing, and at the end of the project, we've got a product. We do very sophisticated things, cameras and all kinds of things. What I didn't hear today was a plan for the new shelter. I heard, "It's really hard to find, and we need five more years." There's no way one of my clients would sign up to have me develop them a product without me showing them exactly the process I'm going to use to get there, exactly how long it's going to take for us to get there, and exactly how much it's going to cost at the end. They wouldn't sign up for it. So I haven't seen or heard a plan or budget to, what's the timeframe to get a new shelter up and running, and how much is it going to cost to do that? It's just open-ended, and there's no way you should sign up for that. Otherwise, without a plan and a budget, things don't change. I've seen it in my business over and over. If you don't have a plan, if you don't have a schedule that you're following, and if you don't have a budget that you have to abide by, things never get done, and they just kind of go on and on. So I would encourage you to not approve this based on just pure business, common sense. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Leo McFarlane, resident of Auburn and president and CEO for Volunteers of America. The shelter issue from day one has been a contentious issue, whether or not Auburn needed a shelter at all. The data prior to the shelter opening two years ago in June indicated a dire need to provide some sort of shelter of support for, for the Auburn homeless who were residing here on DeWitt Center and who scattered out throughout the community in vacant lots, and a general challenge to the, to the fact that folks didn't have any place to shower, clean up, use the restroom. And so this, this was a church, People of Faith community-driven effort to establish a shelter. We have been very proactive in not only addressing the needs of the people who come to the door. We have attempted to be very proactive in engaging with the community to listen to what they wanted to see done differently. As Nikki spoke earlier, the shelter when it opened up in June of 2015 was an overnight shelter. It was for 47 people. Over time, it's been expanded to allow for a 30, 60, 90-day, 24/7 program that focused on people really trying to leave homelessness. And that's the system we put in place, and that's where you have case management, that's where you're working with, that's where you're working with the folks to move them into, if possible, shared or affordable housing so they can stabilize, work on the recovery, and leave homelessness. The other side of the, the facility that expanded to 47 overnight visitors was deemed necessary to be the entry point for those folks to move into the 24/7 side, the three, the 30, 60, 90-day program. As complex as that may all seem, it also, back on November 1st, converted to a dry shelter. Again, listening to the community, converted to a dry shelter where everybody is intoxicated coming in, anybody exhibiting behavior issues that would indicate they might be under the influence of drugs, we'd have a cheek swab, and then that would be determined whether or not somebody was actively engaged in drug activity. All of their possessions for the overnight folks are screened when they come in each night. All their bags are emptied and everything is gone through. Law enforcement is on-site, even today, probation is on-site. Daily visits from, daily in shifts, day shift and night shift from the Auburn police team, sheriff's team that are out there, sorry, sheriff's team that are out there, the homeless outreach team for the sheriffs are in there. The shelter also, Volunteers of America contracts with the Department of Health and Human Services to run this program. We are actively provided oversight by the county of our activities. This probably isn't the place to try to answer everybody's concern that was addressed today about the operation of the shelter. I can tell you this, we have a very, very dedicated staff that have, I believe, been misrepresented here today. We have, we care for each and every person who's in this shelter and recognizing the struggles that they are struggling with, whether it be an addiction issue, whether it be a mental health issue, or whether they're there because of economic purposes. We are very concerned about what the next steps are for Auburn's homeless. There's 97 people, roughly 95 to 97 people, in that shelter at any evening. We have seen hundreds of folks come through the shelter who we haven't seen in a year's time since. Meaning, two years ago, well, oops, I'm over my time. I didn't understand that there was a question that a commission member, a curie, wanted to know or ask, and I'm happy to answer questions. What is your, would you? Go ahead. I'm thinking that maybe you have some questions? Maybe we'll let the rest of the public comment, and then we'll invite you back for questions. Sure. All right. Thank you.
Good day. My name is Dick S. Rudy. I'm somewhat new to Auburn. I moved here about five years ago, and two and a half years or so back, I've wanted to get involved with more volunteer-type effort and had heard about the, kind of the thrust of trying to deal with the homeless issue here in Auburn. And I attended kind of a preliminary meeting with the Board of Supervisors in which I met a few of the primary people involved with Right Hand Auburn and offered my involvement in whatever way that they felt I could help. Since then, I've seen and heard a lot and kind of feel a little bit more familiar with what's going on here in Auburn, which is not anything new, in looking at our national homeless problems and lack of housing and high-cost housing and so on and so forth. I commend the, the county for contracting with Robert Mark Burt insofar as a comprehensive report and recommendations to the county insofar as what might be done. Obviously, it was suggested that there are two primary areas, perhaps a third that's more ancillary, to, insofar as a permanent, permanent facility. Concurrent with that, and somewhat separate from the county's effort, the population of our local community, primarily Auburn, I think has shown me why I'm so pleased to be living here, which is a, kind of a volunteer effort, compassion, an interest to do what's right for all our, all our population. There was a lot of discussion concerning people coming from elsewhere, and because we were such, so attractive insofar as what we had to offer. I think that's been disputed and, and put to rest. You've heard a lot of discussion today with regards to, you know, why it shouldn't be where, where it is, operational questions and issues. I have been also involved with St. Vincent of Paul through St. Teresa's, St. Teresa's Parish. They, twice a month, feed, provide clothing for whoever needs it, whoever comes to our location, which is, we set up a trailer across from the County Justice Building. So through that effort, and also through the meals program for the shelter, which incidentally is all being funded by the community, no monies from the, from the county. Insofar as the facility there likewise, the community has kicked in, and there's someone here in particular that has put an awful lot of his own funds into remodeling that building. It was in very terrible, very difficult conditions when it was given or provided to Right Hand Auburn for the purpose of running the shelter. It's my guess, in the vicinity of $300,000, has been expended by the community to do all that needed to be done to set it up on a very sparse, very sparsely. Further, there was a lot of requirements that the county demanded that be done to improve that building in the form of sprinklers, fire suppression system, fire alarm systems, et cetera. In the meantime, the private community is providing all the effort insofar as the meals, which is a fairly large effort. There's nothing there in the way of food prep facilities. So it's a real struggle for the community to come forth with what's needed for that effort. So I guess what I'm trying to say ultimately is, a lot of people have put a lot of effort into making this thing work, and I think the, the Planning Department, Planning Commission needs to primarily put the effort into a new permanent facility and temporarily provide what's needed to keep this thing going. There was a 10-year plan. Apparently, nothing much had happened. Finally, the community stepped forward, faith-based Salvation Army.
Yeah, could you, could you, you're running over on time quite a bit. Could you finish your comments here, please?
Sure. Thank, I'm sorry about that. Well, in any case, I think the primary effort needs to be that this gentleman here, staff, suggested how difficult it was to find the right spot. There is no right spot. What we're trying to do here is help our fellow human beings to have a place to kind of move forward. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you.
Good morning, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Bridgette Barnes. I'm the chairman of Right Hand Auburn. I'm a local land use and real estate attorney, and I live on Bean Road, very close to the shelter. The reason I wanted to speak to you today, I'm not going to try to answer some of the more slanderous statements made by Mr. Holbrook today. What I want to do instead is to touch you a little bit more about the land uses. It's absolutely correct that it was a faith-based effort to get the location. The location matches all of the land use criteria for emergency shelter, as Mr. Johnson mentioned, having it close to the hospital, coming right out of the jail, et cetera. And the history was that the folks that were being let out of the jail at night would be wandering, in many cases without clothing, down towards St. Teresa's and to Frank Calibra Brattas, the bail bondsmen, every morning, usually around 4:30 or 5:00, and then showing up at St. Teresa's when folks were gathering for mass in the morning. That's actually, during the week. That's actually how I and various other members of Right Hand Auburn got dragged into this, was trying to figure out what, how best to help these folks. But you're, and I'm more than happy to come back up and answer questions about the interrelationship between Right Hand Auburn and the production of the food and the supplementary resources that are all provided privately, and the connection with VOA, and who signs the operating agreement, and who's responsible for those pieces, if you gentlemen wish us to respond. I wanted to talk a little bit more about the land use aspect here. The staff report properly identifies the notice of exemption that they wish to work from for purposes of the approval of the CUP as being 15301 of the SEQUEL guidelines. Ms. Strasser flipped over to utilization of an EIR, but I wanted to let the commission know that that reference is incorrect, because Placer County cannot meet the low-income coordination standards that are mandated by state law, Government Code 65008. And therefore, the, there are very, very strict restrictions that preclude either the Board of Supervisors or any cities that do not meet that requirement from imposing restrictions on emergency shelters and housing for very, very low income. Frankly, we just don't have any place else. That's the problem. And Government Code 65889.5B makes it very clear that that kind of mandate doesn't occur. It's, the state of California has stepped into this, because the problem is that there are certain types of LULU's locally, unpleasant land uses, that folks do not want to live around, no matter what, no matter how many protections that can be put in, whether or not we're operating the shelter properly. They don't want a shelter. not we're operating the shelter properly, they don't want a shelter. And so, the issue is always, it has to go somewhere else. You can hear the undercurrent of the voluntary meetings that are going on right now on other locations, and how could Ken Graham try to address it as best he can without bringing to you sites that haven't gone through the committee process yet to consider. All of them are going to have negatives and positives. The ones that are the farthest away from the residences are going to have transportation problems that Lisa mentioned. I just wanted you to know that it's not for lack of attempting to, to assist with the problem that we're where we are and why we need further time in order to address it. And that is why, when we were consulted and asked, "Well, if it goes for a CUP, do you have any objection to time limitations?", we said, "No, because I understand. The community wants an assurance that the issue is going to be resolved. It's just that there's going to have to be a lot of private contribution to supplement what is occurring with the county right now in order to get us far enough away from the community so that they are, you know, in some fashion, calm down." Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Tom Getz. I'm a resident of Placer County. I am a board member of Right Hand Auburn, and I'm also a president of St. Vincent de Paul, St. Teresa Conference. So, I've worked with the homeless here in this community for four to five years. I've personally been out there on the streets, in the camps, and I've seen horrendous life that they have. That's why I joined Right Hand Auburn, to try to get the shelter up and running. Look, I think we all understand, nobody wants a shelter in their neighborhood. Nobody wants this albatross here. But the people that, that live in the direct community moved here when there's a jail. So I really question the, the logic of, of course, they didn't know there'd be a shelter, and this is a temporary shelter. So my point is simply, you're viewing this as, as a use. In other words, is this zoning correct? Is it liable? And that's why, that's what your job is today, not to judge how the shelter's being operated possibly. But I've been involved from day one with the shelter. I've seen a lot of good things come out of it. I support it, and I think it's, if it's looked at as a temporary location, it serves a purpose to the community. I can tell you personally, there was an uptick in people when the shelter first opened, and I'm basing that on my statistics with the distribution of the trailer and so forth across the center. So my numbers tell me it ticked up, now it's ticking down. The distribution for the last two months on a Sunday morning has been very minimal. These people are in the shelter. So if, if the new operating permit lets 100 people in the shelter, doesn't make 50 of them leave at 7:00 in the morning, I think it's going to keep the homeless out of the neighborhoods. It'll be a positive move. So what I'm saying, I think from my personal experience, there's fewer homeless people on the street, there's fewer homeless people in those neighborhoods, especially if we can keep 100 people housed. And, and the homeless are not coming to Auburn to get a handout. Fewer are coming, I should say. And then to finish, because I know what that red light means, to finish quickly, I'm a contractor, a lot of my work's in San Francisco. I witness homeless down there, homelessness at a high level, and there's a city that has not embraced it properly. So my hat's off to Placer County for the approach they took, getting Dr. Marbot to do a study, to find out a good model, and, and to utilize that model, and I, the county has done that, and that's what I think the shelter supports. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Distinguished members of the board, I want to thank you for hearing us out today. My name's Dusty Byers. I've been in North Auburn my entire life. I was born at Auburn Faith, went through grade schools at Rock Creek here, leaving only for four years to serve this country. Upon coming home, I find the Right Hand of Auburn is already put in the shelter here. I live in such a close proximity that I was able to see my house on the satellite map. I do a lot of exercising through the Dewitt Center. On a regular basis, I see constant drug use, talking, smoking crack in the middle of the street, see people fornicating in the middle of the lawn, constant fights and vulgarity. I was happy to hear that the applicant agrees that this is not the proper location for the shelter, but who suffers while we wait, while we take five years to find another location? I've had things stolen off the back porch of my house. I now wonder if I have to chain up my barbecue. I have to lock my car doors at night in my own driveway because they've been rifled through before. I have many neighbors that are too scared to come and speak out today. Every that came here and spoke today is very brave of them, and I want to commend them for coming up and speaking. So know that there is 10 times more people that couldn't make a 10 o'clock on a Thursday appointment, or that were brave enough to come out and speak today. I too would like to know, if an applicant shows up or a potential resident shows up, and they're too drunk or drugged to be admitted, where do they go then? We're constantly switching the shelter back and forth from dry to wet. That kind of information doesn't get disseminated properly, and it entitles matter. The homeless that would be utilizing it don't hear that stuff. So they hear there's a shelter up here and they come to check it out. I too love Auburn, and this is a great place, and I understand the need for the shelter. I'm not saying it doesn't need to exist. I don't think within a mile of three grade schools, a hospital, several doctor's offices, mini-business, and a lot of residents is a fair place to put this shelter or continue it for another five years. I want to thank you guys very much for your time, and please, don't let this stay in our area anymore.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Burkhard, and I thank you for this opportunity to make a couple comments. I personally have lived here for over 20 years and raised my three sons. My friends and I used to run through Dewitt and ride our bicycles to go shopping, and I can no longer do that because of the harassment that I have personally have experienced. Our home, after living there for 20 years, my husband was, his business equipment was broken into, and he lost over $3,500 worth of equipment, and it was pretty blatant. We could hear them, but we were too frightened to, to approach them. But the comment I wanted to make to both of you, to all of you to consider, is that I understood the comment that 47 people were originally brought into the shelter, and now we have 100. So now we're being asked to approve for five years for beds for 100 people. Have you considered how that 100 might multiply as the 47 did today to be 100? Is there any consideration? Please look into that. And my last comment is, have any, have, what I'm hearing described as a centralization of the homeless. And I've worked with St. Vincent de Paul's in this community in Roseville. I've, I've worked with the homeless, but has anyone considered not having a, a facility that centralizes the homeless, that is more neighbor or community, more local community based? And we have smaller shelters, not just one big vast shelter where we're going to bus them into North Auburn. We all know that that's not going to happen, but, you know, could, could smaller communities take care of their homeless? And we have a facility, Placer County is huge, and we have a facility in various locations. I would ask you to consider that, please.
Thank you. Let me see, you've already made comments.
Yes, and I didn't use my three minutes. Yeah, yeah.
And normally, we really just give you one crack at the microphone.
Correct, and you were announcing how it would work while my three minutes was started when I first came up here, so I just like to add something. I would just like to add something, if that's okay.
She can have my three minutes.
No. You say you're going to ask a question?
No, I just want to add something real quick. I just, because I live near.
Is this different than what you've already commented on?
Yes.
Yeah, you just have a minute to say it. I'm not going to give you three minutes again.
Right, we've taken a minute to discuss that. Can I just be real quick? Okay. I and many other people have moved close to the jail, very close to the jail because it was safe. It was very, it's one of the safest places that you can be is near a jail, actually, because no criminal wants to be near, and if they are, they're in the back of a patrol car, they, or they've been dealt with, and they're on their way out, or they're monitored closely by probation. It is a very safe, or it was a very safe place to be, so that's why we were there. It has drastically changed, because I have lived there for six years, so I have seen it change night and day. And I just wanted to add that I reluctantly took my daughter to the neighborhood park two weeks ago and had to leave, to grab her and leave and call the sheriff because someone walked up, who doesn't live in the neighborhood, walked up and parked, put her blanket, she's carrying her white bag, and put her blanket down with an ankle monitor. I saw it like, like that, and I was out of there. I cannot even enjoy taking my daughter out to go on the slide without being affected by this environment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, maintain order out there. We got, we got to honor what the speakers are saying.
I'm Victoria Connolly. I live in the city of Auburn. I've been involved with the shelter from when it began to about a year and a half while it was in planning stages. I've not been involved so recently of late, but I kind of knew what's going on there. Going to make some comments, not in any particular order, but regarding the transportation issue, it was alleged that there would be no transportation provided. For example, if it was placed down in Ofer, I'm at that same meeting, what I heard is, transportation could be considered. I've spent 34 years in social work, 32 of which were dealing with residential treatment of some sort, whether I was the wife of the director, living in the facility, whether I was placing, whether I was a social worker in a facility, had that experience. Residential treatment or care and supervision is never easy. There's always incidents, and I always instructed my caregivers that at some point, there would be some concern about the care and supervision that they were giving. I personally have checked bags at the shelter. I have no idea what people are saying about no bags being checked. The sheriff office has said in various meetings here in the county, that you used to be able to throw a rock and hit an encampment in the fields. Not now, that the shelter has been very beneficial in helping people access services and get them into shelter in the night. Regarding the numbers multiplying from 47 to 100, the initial allowance was for 47 to be in the placement at night. That was expanded to 100 after it was seen that 47 was being dealt with appropriately. Those, the rest of the remainder of the 100 were folks who are released still during the day. Regarding CEQA, I know a bit about CEQA, having fought it on a few occasions or using it. I know that to be considered for a project, you need to have significant impacts, and I would question whether this shelter would qualify for a CEQA review. And what we have here as far as the complaints from the community are people sitting on scanners day in, day out, receiving legal information, legally or illegally, and broadcasting it in the community, creating a witch hunt kind of atmosphere, when in fact, if you go to the shelter, you will see a pretty calm environment, no matter what time of day or night you go there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Christie. I actually live next door to Tom Getz, and so this issue is obviously polarizing to, to neighbors, to friends, to families and whatnot. I know you've heard from a lot of people today about the shelter and, and the issues, you know, just this last week alone, you know, a security guard was assaulted at Auburn Sutter Faith. I have twin boys that are 12. I had to make the decision, they're competitive gymnasts, and one of them got hurt. Do I take him to Autumn, Auburn Sutter, or do, do I go down the hill and, you know, a 30-minute drive and take him to Sutter, Roseville, because I don't want to deal with the craziness that has gone on at the hospital up here? St. Joseph's, again, there was a call yesterday there. These kids are K through 8. That's two calls in a week because of transients that are found in the bathroom. These kids don't deserve that. They deserve to go to school in, in a safe environment, and they should not be subject to that. So you guys have heard all that, you know that. I wanted to present a different, a different attitude, or a different position today, and that's the financial impact. I went back, and I think I told you guys before, I did a real estate analysis of the homes surrounding the shelter versus the rest of the 95602 zip code, and I did apples to apples, meaning, you know, less than 2,000 square feet, less than 4/10ths of an acre, so you can't add in other variables. And it was shown that there is significant economic impact to the neighborhood surrounding the shelter, whereas the information presenting from the Planning Commission says that there's not. It is. It's hard factual contractual data, and it shows that the homes, at one point, the number of homes listed was three times greater than the rest of the neighborhood. And then, once these homes were not selling, or the ones that sold, sold at a discount, people took them off the market because there wasn't even people showing up to look at them. The houses that sold, sold for an average of $20,000 less per house versus a comparable house. I don't know about you, I have two kids that I have to put through college, right? That's one year of college for any of those, any of those people in that area. If you're a retired person, you can't take a $20,000 hit on your house. These people are stuck. They are stuck. So to say that the shelter doesn't have economic impact, it's just, it's not true. These aren't the 1%ers. These people need some help, and they need you to help them and to deny the extended use permit. I do believe that there needs to be a shelter. I am not anti-shelter. I am pro-kids, and I am pro, and I'm pro for that neighborhood, and that's why I'm up here saying that it does need to be moved, and it needs to be moved sooner rather than later, and/or, you never want something to be a sunk cost. I'm a business owner. But you guys need to start from scratch, and someone needs to take the position and have enough courage on a, at your level to do that and to say, "We're going to fight for North Auburn. We're going to fight for the kids, the seniors, and the families."
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cindy Moyn, and I have a bunch of things to say here, but first off, I want to say the CEQA issue. My husband is a forester, and CEQA is a very important aspect. And if there's any question on whether that needs to be looked into, I think everything here should be tabled today before any decision is made, and look into that first, because if you need to, you need to. It's not, it's not if, you get what I mean. The money that's spent on this shelter could put people in hotels, by the way. I don't know that you guys know this. I'm very scattered here. I have heard about bags being checked at the shelter. That's great. That's wonderful. Then we're hearing from the transients of Auburn that have, actually have a Facebook bag, that their persons are not checked. Auburn, their bodies are not checked for anything, their bags aren't. So there's drugs being done in the bathrooms, everything. The shelter manager is on administrative leave. People can argue with that, you know, but bottom line is, he's gone. Things have been happening at that shelter that are very questionable. If this is to go on, maybe, you know, give it one year, let them check in in one year. But the VOA, Volunteers of America, needs to go. There, there's no accountability. We don't know where our taxpayer money's going. This is actually getting insane. There's no accountability whatsoever. We got Right Hand Auburn throwing money at it, we've got the county, this, this shelter that was supposed to be funded by volunteers only is costing us a lot as taxpayers, and the accountability is not there. No one knows where the money's going to. Okay? The accountability wasn't with the, the shelter manager either. And I think it's very important that extreme criteria is put down on these guys. And I would like it out, forbid, if we're going to have it here, maybe for another year, why they look for another place. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sick. Edie Leoni. I've been a homeowner for, was a homeowner for 30 years, a business owner twice. Um, I, I've been a homeowner for, was a homeowner for thirty years, a business owner twice successfully. My husband worked for the government. I did everything right, and I ended up homeless due to circumstances, and I've been homeless since June. And I was at the shelter doing everything right, helping people, submitting to all the stupid rules, while the bad people got away with stuff. I, you know, it's just ridiculous. My dog looked a black person, I was kicked out by Jake, whatever. So, um, I shouldn't be homeless. I'm not a druggie, alcoholic, mentally ill person. And, you know, I want to say one thing for you guys, please.
Say, say please to the director.
You know, have some compassion for these homeless people, because I got to know them on the inside. I've been helping homeless way before I became homeless, since my twenties, I've been helping the homeless. And these people are there for various reasons. Some on their own accord, some have, have been done to them, you know, a lot of stuff. There's, you, you can't label, put them all in the same box and say they're all bad people because they're not. And when a lot of these people get kicked out of the shelter, some of them stay with me in my car. I've had over twenty people live in me, I've been living in my car since August, and I let them stay with me. They trust me, they don't hurt me, they don't steal from me, they don't violate me in any way because I treat them with respect, and they respect me back. I think some of the community needs to start being personally involved with some of these people and earn their respect. That's another story. But, um, one of the things I would like to talk about, I'm working on, I'm a writer, I'm a writer, and I write about accountability, truth, love, and balance. And we're, you talked about balance, I think you did. We need to find a balance of compassion and accountability. And I think Roseville would be a great area, near that jail, that area, it's all open land out there. Get a bus system going that can go from one courthouse to the next courthouse so they can go to court. You got the stores down there, down by, um, what is it, Washington? You know, you've got, I don't know what that main road is to, where the jail is and the courthouse.
It's Industrial Boulevard.
Yes, Industrial Boulevard. So I think that would be the best area. I'm working on a proposal for all this. But also, create facilities around there that will help these people, financial skills, communication skills, customer service skills. We need to teach these people life skills because they have no hope. And when you have no hope, you have no future, and you have no purpose. That's what we need to give these people, hope and a purpose and means, because they're doing drugs and alcohol, because I talk to them, they tell me their stories, and they're doing it because they have nothing else to do. They have no self, self-worth. And I think that's where we need to focus, is helping these people get some self-worth, some purpose, some goals, and get them working in the community so they can be productive. And I like the Roseville area for many reasons, and I also think the county should hire the homeless to clean up the community, because think about it, if you're working cleaning up, next time you throw something down, you're going to think before you throw it down, you'll go, oh, I've been cleaning up, I ain't going to throw that down. You know what I'm saying? Let's get the county to hire the homeless to clean up the community. Maybe the churches and the businesses can save the recyclables every week, and we can go take them, um, take the homeless that have earned, who have earned the ability to go make money, and take them, and take them to the dump, and they can learn how to work, and they can earn their way. I have a lot of ideas, but I'm too sick to talk about. And my computer broke, I had a couple kids from the jail, I took them to Roseville, they came out of jail, they had no ride, I took them to Roseville. I forgot to remove my laptop, where I had it hidden in my seat, under my mattress, and it broke. So I had my proposal in the middle of it, and I can't finish it, it's been three weeks. But I got my computer back yesterday, yay.
Okay, okay, well, thank you.
Good morning. Uh, my name's Rich Strawser. I live in North Auburn, just across Atwood Road, across from the elementary school as well. I'm also a, a member of the ad hoc committee from North Auburn MAC that provided you with the recommendations, I believe, in your attachment E that you have today. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions to anything that you may have, or I can go through those points. I know there was some discussion as to whether they belong in the CUP or an operating agreement or a site access agreement. But before I do that, I would like to just comment on a couple things that have been brought up so far today here. Again, as a resident and, and someone that's actually lived in that residence across the street over there for more than fourteen years. So when it was built, I participated in that, and I've been there ever since. Uh, my background was, and I, at the time, was employed by Eldorado County Sheriff's Office. I served twenty years with the sheriff's office, so I know a little bit about law enforcement. And I'm one of those, according to Mr. Getz, the foolish people that purchased a home right near a jail, with that personal knowledge of the jail. And I do agree, in the number of years that I lived there, I had no issues with anyone from the jail. We would see the people get released, we knew they walked down Atwood Road, they'd have their personal effects. I didn't have any personal issue with that. The, the specific location where the shelter's located now was a minimum security barracks. We've heard that the site really, it's, it's housed people before, so we don't really need to look at the negative impact, if you will. That was a minimum security barracks that I remember one time in particular, someone walked away, they were supposed to go to a dentist appointment, they walked away. We get PA announcements from the helicopter to lock down, go in your houses, do all of these things. He was in there for something now that we don't even arrest people for anymore with AB 109 and Prop 57. So times have definitely changed, and we have all those people now just coming and going freely. So I don't think it's a fair comparison to say that same site is where we've housed people in the past, the conditions are completely different. And to that end, Ms. Barnes touched on something about the, apparently the CEQA and the debate that's gone on here. Um, I, I do agree that I feel that a negative impact declaration should be completed because that's what was promised to us when the zoning text amendment came before you and it was approved. It was in there multiple times that it was not site-specific. We now have a site-specific request, and I think there's been adequate information provided today that I think you as a board and the county would be negligent if we didn't look at that and address that, because otherwise, we're kind of sweeping it under the rug or kicking the can down the road. And I just feel that it's important that we do in fact take a look at that and not have a legal battle about who's right or wrong. I often talk about the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. Let's do what's right. Let's do what's right. Let's take a look at it. You can clearly go through the original negative declaration where there was no impact on anything, and there's at least six sections where clearly you would, you would have to agree there has been an impact. So I think it's important that we address that as well. Um, and then one other thing, and it has to go with notice, apologize for this, but I'm not picking on Nikki, but Nikki brought up in her presentation that there's residential area within five hundred feet, I believe was what the slide said. And on the notice that was here, we talk about the location of this and specifically cited the building number, and she says approximately four hundred and fifty feet north of the intersections of F and Atwood Road, Atwood Road. Well, and then, and then it goes on to notice, public notices and referral for comments. Public notices were mailed to property owners of record within three hundred feet of the project site. A public hearing notice was also published in the Sacramento Bee newspaper. Well, I can tell you, I live on Ranch House Court where someone else has spoken to, none of our, our neighbors there, nobody in the other Atwood Ranch Development received any notices in the mail. And we received no notices, and this goes back to the original notice, when we go way back to the ZTA, when none of us were noticed. It wasn't until people in the community started to talk. So there's clearly a breakdown, and we pointed that out back then, so that's not been resolved. So if nothing else, so for future, you may want to check how we notify people, but I know none of us received any notice, and I have friends that live in Bell Meadows, and they received notice. So I know notices went out, but people that lived, literally, I could throw a rock to my house from the shelter, we were not notified. So clearly, public notice was, in my opinion, was not met on this requirement as well. So those are two issues that I think that you guys should consider before you make a recommendation regarding this. Now, to that end, to change hats, if I may, if you guys would have any questions, I'd be more than happy to go through what we believed were issues on our recommendations that, that would possibly pertain to the conditional use permit as opposed to an operations agreement. It wasn't our position, we weren't acting as county councilor advisors to say which agreement they fit best in. We could, I can address them if you have questions, otherwise, I could defer the time.
Well, you know, I guess we may have some questions, but I'm a little bit concerned about the amount of time it's going to take. And, you know, one thing I would want to kind of condition it with, you might say, is, is a lot of the elements in there, you're aware, would deal with an operating agreement in the future.
Potentially, there, there's definitely some overlap with the ZTA.
You have some points that you think pertain to the conditional use permit?
Yes.
Could you just briefly go through those and avoid the operating agreement stuff?
Yes. Um, and I'm, I'm referencing now attachment E, that's in your handout. There, there were a few, there were a few points that, and, and there was actually some overlap from my original notes from Nikki's presentation. Um, I'm going to just reference the staffing was one, because we do have a recommendation in there, that's actually item number four to implement minimum staffing requirements. There is a staff within the, the zoning text that had been passed where there were some recommendations on the number of supervisors and the like. Our concern with that, it was not, it was not specific to the total population. So it was essentially three persons, and Nikki's slide today alluded to that, it's approved, there's a hundred people including three staff. Well, if you just have, break that down, that's a thirty-three or thirty-three to one ratio roughly, as far as the, the staff to resident ratio. Our recommendation was twenty to one, and we base that on other facilities, in particular the Cots facility down in Petaluma. Those are the numbers that they were referencing. So I know there's been some discussion about that, but initially, we thought that would be something that would be appropriate within the operations agreement or site access agreement. However, since it's contained within the CUP presentation and there's language within the permit to the staffing level, I'm not sure where it best fits, but I wanted to address that as one point. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Okay. And, and in addition to that, there's been some discussion about the, the community liaison and/or someone that would be an intermediary if you were between the, the, the community, the sheriff's office, the HHS, the shelter. And so we have some specific recommendations that, as we understand it, without getting into all the background and everyone that we spoke to, as we understand it, HHS is basically going to be the administrator of this, of this operations agreement, not the CUP. And so we believe that it would be within the operations agreement, but there's been some conversation again where it's referenced in the CUP. So I don't know if it's something that should be considered and have language specific in the CUP or not. I know there's some discussion as to how they enforce that or monitor that. But that's one that initially, we were proposing that it would be in the operations agreement, but it's been presented within the, the zoning text amendment and the CUP application.
Not specifically in the draft of CUP though, is that correct, or?
No, it, it's, it's, it is referenced in the CUP, but here's, here's a concern that we had with the CUP language and, and the zoning text amendment language. It's very general. Um, it's, and, and it's, it's subject to interpretation, and we were trying to eliminate the, the ambiguity of it, if you will, and make it again, spirit of the law versus letter of the law. Let's be specific as to what it is we're asking for and have accountability as to if something's not followed, what's going to happen. So we were asking that whatever is within the CUP, there's more specificity to the, the actual language that's included. Um, they talk about a, a, a safety plan or neighborhood plan. Again, it's very generic, what does that mean? Um, there was reporting requirements within the language that it says if requested, it wasn't mandatory. In the lang, again, that's just language that I've seen on the slides and reading through the document. So I'd just like to see, or we would like to see, the, the, any agreement that's entered into, that it's, it's more specific.
But we're not here today to discuss the agreement, though.
Well, but again, the problem is that some of this overlaps into the CUP, because the CUP is referencing some of the points and the recommendations that we have. So if, if my, our concern is if you allow the CUP to stand as is, and, and then when we get to the operating agreement, we say, well, it's already referenced in the CUP, so let's don't include it in the operating agreement, then we've, we've missed the mark. We're, we're asking for specificity and at least to consider all of the facts, you know, the circumstances behind those recommendations. So you're, you're correct, sir, it's, it's, it's not about the operations agreement. Again, we only had a couple items we thought might even apply to the CUP, but today, there's been, seems to be more overlap in, in presentation and language. So I, it's, again, it's up to you, but contained within that, there's some language that there's some overlap. That's our point.
Okay.
And then the last one would be the, the, the time limit and, and the recommendation, again, recommending, and I think you saw that as a committee, it was recommended that we at least have a one-year renew or review of this every year. I think that's important if in fact you grant five years. I do agree with a lot of the members here that, why does it even have to be? I mean, usually it's indefinite, so for some reason, there's an arbitrary five-year, why not one year, two year? But if you choose to do anything beyond one year, then I think it should at least be reviewed annually, or we as a group feel that way.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick, Mr.?
Oh, go ahead.
Great job to the MAC. I love specific advisory comments as opposed just to we don't like it or we do like it. This is fantastic. Thank you very much.
Good. Well, thank you very much. A lot of people put a lot of time into it, and again, none of us are anti-shelter. I don't want that message to think, we agree there needs to be a shelter somewhere. We also all agree that this isn't the right location for it, so we're willing to be part of the solution and not just complain about it, but we don't want to, just, we don't want to just kick the can down the road either. I mean, there's been some really good points brought up today about, do we even have a legitimate location here? And those are real questions that I think we should be asking ourselves and not put that square peg in a round hole. So thank you very much. Appreciate your comments.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, uh, is that it from the public? No, we have one more here.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Brown, Placer County's Health and Human Services Director. I just wanted to touch-
Okay, so let me.
Yes.
What I was going to do, if there's no more public comment, I was going to turn it back to, I guess, the applicant, and I guess that includes you, doesn't it, or not? I don't know.
I'm actually not the applicant. If our board enters into any future operating agreement, it most likely would be our department that would oversee an operating agreement. We would draft the recommendations, we would be the department that would be considering the recommendations from the ad hoc committee of the North MAC.
Okay, go ahead then.
So I just wanted to offer, I, I think we agree with most of the North Auburn MAC recommendations. One thing I have to say is that all items other than number seven that deals with the plan should, we strongly feel they should be addressed in an operating agreement rather than a conditional use permit. And I have to say, in regards to staffing ratios, we're actively in the process of investigating staffing standards of similarly run facilities in Northern California. We will most likely recommend increases in staffing in any future contract, but I have to note that staffing needs to meet the needs of the shelter, and the, the number of shelters we've looked at so far to date do not have a uniform staffing ratio for the days, for the nights, for the PM shift. It varies depending on what their needs are, very different at night than in the afternoon when they're feeding people and they're also performing intake on individuals. So at this point, I certainly would not recommend locking in any type of staffing ratio into any conditional use permit. I think that needs to be further researched, and I think it's much more appropriately considered in an operational agreement.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we may have more questions, staff-type questions. And so at this time, I'll close the public hearing, turn it back to the applicant, and, you know, as far as the questions for VOA, we can do that now too if you want, if, if the applicant so desires.
I think a lot of good input. Um, we're happy to answer any questions that you have. I do believe a lot of the, particularly the North Auburn MAC input, as Jeff Brown has said, I think a lot of those things are appropriate in the operating agreement. We just want to make sure in the lan, in the use permit, you have flexibility, because we know there's going to have to be changes and modifications along the way to make sure it works the way that it's supposed to work. So we believe that the current use permit, as we proposed, is appropriate. We're asking your positive recommendation there, but we definitely do believe there are some things in the operating agreement that should be included, and we're interested in hearing your feedback on that also.
Okay, I guess I do have a kind of a question where, and, you know, I'm going to let my cohorts ask questions too here, but at any rate, we've heard about the possibility that the, well, the North Auburn MAC and the staff report suggested that we approve the conditional use permit with a five-year term, but we've also heard that there was discussion, or maybe they recommended two years? As far as the timing of the term, you know, if it's like two years, then you'd be back here in two years asking for more.
Going through the same process. We're going through the same process again. I, I think that would be likely. What, what I did hear at the, at the MAC, and I think actually has a lot of merit, is this idea of coming back for this annual update review, you know, letting people know what's going on. I think that's a, that's a very valuable tool. I, I think I would personally support that concept, but as far as the limited term, I do believe it should be five years. Everything else, you're just revisiting all the same stuff and actually taking the focus away on where are we going to go, because the focus keeps being back here about how this site and how long are we going to have to be at that site. Everything else, you're just revisiting all the same stuff and actually taking the focus away on where are we going to go because the focus keeps being back here about how this site and how long are we going to have to be at that site.
So the one-year review, would that, that wouldn't necessarily involve the Planning Commission, or would it involve?
I think if you guys were interested in hearing about it, it could. I think probably most appropriate is the board's going to have to hear about it because through their operating agreement, they will have the power to make any changes they can because a lot of those changes, since we are a partner in it, involve money. And so they will have the ultimate authority about how much money gets spent on the site.
Go ahead, do you have any more questions?
I think maybe one of the concerns that the public might have with the five-year extension term would probably relate to the fact that we get five years down the road and then it's reported that we still don't have a site, we still don't have a place. We're no really further to a solution than we are today. You know, and I think that's, that's it. How would you suggest, I guess, that we can monitor this and, I mean, put some heat on your department, I guess, to make some real progress on it sooner than later?
And I think that's a great point, and first point I would make is trying to put the pressure on all of us to identify a site. I can put a bunch of sites out there, but saying that's the one, a lot of other people are going to have to say, that's great. Then we can put the heat on us to go make it happen, go through the process, the needs to go through, build a building or renovate a building. That is actually, I think, the easy part here. I guess I would recommend, the idea of the annual reporting would be that opportunity, if we're going to have a building at the end of five years, it probably means we better have a site picked out by the end of the first year so that we can then go into an environmental review process in the second year, and then we can go acquire a property in the third year, and then I guess worst case, it might take two years depending on how big this facility is. So doing that annual review process, I could see that being a very good opportunity. If we're not meeting some midway marks on those years, that should be very telling. And I think the first milestone is the big one, identifying a site that everyone can buy into that is as appropriate as it can be, knowing there's probably not a perfect site.
I'd like to just make a comment, not a question, for Mr. Grimes here. There's been a site proposed, I don't know where the proposal is, out to, near Santucci Center, across the street, and it's way out there on Industrial Boulevard, as someone mentioned earlier. And several of our letters that we received here today, or just on our desk today, were from residents in Rockland, said they're going to move. So, you know, there's not going to be any good site, no matter what you do. And I'd like to follow up just by saying, I live, I'm a lifelong resident of Roseville, a member of St. Vincent de Paul probably for 20 years. My wife's president of Excel Roseville, which serves about 20 to 30 kids right in our own neighborhood and their families, and we have the Gathering Inn about five blocks from my house in Salvation Army downtown. But it's an ongoing process, and in the past in Roseville, we just had just all kinds of complaints. I'm not saying there isn't any complaint now, but over the last, I would say, five to 10 years, it's been considerably reduced. And I don't think we have any permanent housing other than that, the nighttime housing at the Gathering Inn, which is a kind of a nomadic thing, you know? They come and have to bust in and out. So we do have, and I think we have about 200 to 250 homeless, the last report. I think the county came out with the report a little while back, or just a month ago. I guess all my, I'm saying is, there's not going to be any perfect site. What I hear today was the time limit, and I think shorter is better than longer because it does put more pressure on people to find a site, whether it be that Santucci site or not. But the management of it, I think whether those allegations are true or not, I'm sure that some of them are and some of them aren't, but that still is an issue. But I have just one question, not for you, Ken, but for our attorney. We've heard a lot of comments on both sides on this business with the EIR, and if it's appropriate, and I want to like a few more comments from her if I can.
Are you looking for just general comments, or did you have a specific?
Well, is it? Thank you, Ken.
Yeah, thank you, Ken. Well, general comments, do we need one or don't we need one for the CUP here in your opinion? I mean, your staff says we don't, but maybe you heard some additional information today you'd like to comment on.
Right, okay. Let's walk through the process. We did have a negative declaration for the zoning text amendment that allowed the additional zoning, which is now in place. The CUP requirement for this particular site, conditional use permit, is a discretionary action by the board, which means under CEQA, it is a project. I think what is missing here is the notion that there is a process in CEQA as to what you do once you have decided you have discretionary project. You don't simply jump to negdec, EIR. You go through a particular process, which Nikki described in her presentation. And I would cite to CEQA Guidelines, Section 15061. And in 15061, it states specifically, once I find this-
I hope you would read it because we don't have it in front of us.
Sorry, I don't have that committed to memory.
Oh, I didn't know that by heart. I'm sorry to Babble.
And I won't bore you with the law, but I wanted to read you the beginning sentence because I think it pertains to this entire discussion. 15061A, "Once the lead agency has determined an activity is a project subject to CEQA, a lead agency shall determine whether the project is exempt from CEQA." So the first step in the CEQA review process, and it is a review, it's a review of the project, proposed project, a review of the proposed project with respect to the environment, the baseline, and the first step in that CEQA review process is, is this proposed project exempt under CEQA? Staff has identified the Class 1 exemption, which is existing facilities, as the exemption that is appropriate to the proposed project. Now, another thing that seems to be a little confusing is, what is the existing facility? The existing facility is the building, the existing building. That is what the existing facility is. What staff did is an analysis of that existing building and what might be, if any, the potential environmental impacts of that existing building being used for emergency shelter under a CUP that's proposed for a maximum of five-year term. Staff's conclusion is that there are no impacts and that it falls within this exemption. Now, the Planning Commission's job at this point, the first recommendation is to determine whether, based on the staff report, the evidence, the testimony provided to the Planning Commission today, whether the Planning Commission supports that conclusion. If the Planning Commission does not, we'll go through what the recommendations would be to the Board, because this is a recommendation. If the Planning Commission believes that the evidence supports an exemption because, as pointed out in the staff report, there are no proposed permanent improvements to the outside of the building or the surrounding environments. The shelter is capped at the 100-person limit. Staff found no evidence of increase of parking, traffic, noise, et cetera. This is staff's conclusion, and what the Planning Commission must now do is determine whether it agrees with that conclusion and that it falls under an exemption.
Thank you, I think that explains it.
Okay, thank you. Let me see, Fred, you had some questions rattling around. Did you get those answered, or?
Well, I don't see much point in asking some of the ones since we're not part of the agreement, the operating agreement process, but I do have a question. What we're being asked to do is to extend an existing agreement, correct?
No.
Excuse me, a conditional use permit that's already in effect, or is this a brand-new one?
This is a brand-new one.
Okay.
The conditional use permit that was granted before was a temporary conditional use permit. Under the code, there is a maximum period of time during which a temporary use permit can exist. That time period runs at the end of this month. It's a maximum, essentially, two years.
Since it's temporary, you have to start all over.
You have to start all over again.
Okay.
So what you're doing is, you're looking at this in terms of a five-year proposed term for a shelter in that location.
Okay. So then my question is, based on that, the last temporary, the one that's going to expire on the 31st, did it have, I wasn't here in 2015, did it have basically the same recommended findings as these five that are listed here?
If I'm not mistaken, the temporary use permit, because basically it allows a use that is not normally allowed in that zoning district, to exist for a temporary period of time. So although you have some of the same findings, requirements as to detriment to the surrounding community, because it's a limited period of time, your findings to that extent are different because you're looking at only a specific period of time. Here, you have your standard conditions, pardon me, your standard findings for a use permit, the commission as the second task is required to determine whether they can be supported. So these are, if you will, I want to say broader, but they are certainly more robust findings because now you are looking at a use permit for a period of time.
Now, can we, when we're making our decision, can we use the information that we're hearing and the information that we've seen over the last two years to determine whether or not we think these findings are accurate?
Are we talking about the use permit findings?
Yes.
Yes, you may.
Okay. All right.
Okay. That it for Fred?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Okay. Let me see, I want to, maybe Mr. Brown, if you could get back up, and I have a question for you. And it's really kind of a difficult question, but, and I hear, you know, our people today have really expressed a lot of concern about what's going on around the center here and around town, and so apparently, we have some bad actors. And I know I've seen in the paper, you know, a lot of the police reports that are reported in there really reference transient people. So we have several bad actors, but I guess kind of what is going through my mind is, let's just say the shelter closes down. And we have a lot of people that are going to be somewhere, and I don't know if, it's kind of hard to judge, but I guess from your departments, you do see a lot of these folks in various reasons, but are they all going to go away? Or what's going to happen? What would you think would happen?
Well, I always think the greatest predictor of the future is history, and when our department, working with the community, did a count, the point-in-time count for homeless in 2015, which predates the shelter, this was January 2015, we counted 229 homeless individuals in the Auburn area, the greatest concentration of homeless individuals in the county. That year, we counted 517 individuals. So, you know, there certainly has been a large number of homeless people proportionally in the Auburn area as opposed to other areas of the county. So I offer that, and that was pre-shelter. So post-shelter, you shut a shelter down, you're going to have individuals out on the street. I think the biggest question for everyone in the community is, what happens to those people? How many will stay? How many will camp? How many will leave? And I don't think we have numbers on that, but I think history shows that certainly without a shelter, there were a large number of homeless people that continued to reside in the Auburn area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, does that complete the questions from the Commission?
I might suggest that instead of taking both of these recommendations together, that we take them one by one, and I would refer you to your staff report for a little bit more detail on that, page seven and eight, and ask that the Commission first consider the recommendation regarding CEQA.
Okay, so we're going to bifurcate our decision, and so the first requested one is the finding that addresses CEQA. And so on that particular recommendation, staff recommendation, I'd like to, at this time, see if somebody wants to make a motion.
Well, I'll move that the both conditional use permits categorically exempt from the environmental review pursuant to the sections in our staff report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, let's have a rule call on the CEQA findings.
Mr. Akuri?
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that motion carries, and so now we're looking at the actual use permit. And I still kind of am a little bit fuzzy on, say, could we have silence out in the audience, please? Attachment B and C, as far as their place in the use permit? Can we get some help on that?
If, do I assume the question is whether the term could be different than the five years? Is that what you've asked?
No, we're talking about a security plan-
Safety plan.
And a-
Neighborhood relations.
Neighborhood Relations Plan, and-
North Area MAC.
I can start that discussion, maybe Nikki could finish it, but Attachment C, which is Neighborhood Relations Plan, that is already included as a condition of approval.
Right.
Where's that at?
Condition number five.
Yes, that one is-
And I think the confusion was Attachment B, I'm not sure you'll find that in the conditions of approval, but if it's recommended, that we add that to the conditions of approval, that can be part of your motion.
And so if-
And Attachment B is regarding the security plan.
Okay. So we're looking for a motion, and what that motion would also do is include Attachment B as part of the conditional use permit.
Can you say Attachment C is already included?
Yeah.
A moment of, I guess, discussion if we could?
Sure.
I mean, it's obvious the problem isn't going to go away if this conditional use permit doesn't get approved. It doesn't make the problem go away. I don't think there's a neighborhood in Placer County who's going to contact the county, inviting them to relocate this operation to their neighborhood. In fact, I'd bet heavily on it. That being said, my guess is law enforcement could probably confirm that 90% of the problems are caused by 10% of the individuals they deal with, probably quite a few frequent flyers who they know well. The rest are not the issue. I guess, that being said, I would, you know, like to have a little discussion on the length of the term. Not that I don't fully believe that it will take five years to get this processed and built, but if we're going to revisit it and get a report on the progress, if there's no satisfaction with that level of progress, we don't have any way to respond except say we're not happy. And so that's, I guess, where I'm looking at, the time length, or another solution if anybody's got a better idea.
I'd like to propose a two-year conditional use permit. No comment?
Well, I think I'm going to be the odd man out. For me, it's not meeting the recommended findings. It hasn't been, and I don't see it heading in that direction. If you look at finding number three, the establishment, maintenance and operation of the proposed emergency shelter use will not, under the circumstances of the particular use, be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, comfort, and general welfare of the people residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use. We've had a couple of years, and that finding is erroneous.
Yeah, but a lot of it, well, a lot of it, a lot, lot of-
Okay, I have to ask the group, while we're in discussion here, I know you may hear things that you- like, but you need to let us conduct our discussion without a lot of clapping.
A lot of the comments have been not so much the use, but the operation of it.
Well, that's not ours to say, though. We don't get to say in that, but it's still part of the findings. And if it's been getting operated that way, we can't, we can't look to the future. We have no say in the operation going forward.
We don't.
But I asked if we could look at what's been taking place, and Legal said yes.
Okay.
And so my thought is, if it hasn't been getting done over two years.
I agree.
I think, though, that the homeless population, part of it exists up here because the services are here, not just the shelter, but other county services are based out of here. And so I think that if it went away tomorrow, I don't know that the people that are the real issue are going to go away tomorrow with it.
That's a true statement, but we know for a fact if we approve this, they're definitely going to stay.
You know, so maybe that's where I'm thinking we need some more teeth in it somewhere. One, in a little applied pressure to make sure this progress is being pushed forward as quickly as possible. And two, of course, on the other hand, in two years, if they came back and said, we've made a little progress, but we're not happy with it, shutting it down still doesn't solve the problem either then. So I, I'm kind of.
They've made it difficult on us because they've only given us the land use portion of this thing.
And that's really all, that's all we have.
Yeah, so we're kind of, we're hopping down the road.
Yeah. Yeah, that's basically our jurisdiction is the land use part of it.
And so that's all I basing my thoughts on it on are these findings, because we don't have anything else.
You know, one of the, let me address Jeffrey's comment. At least what I was hearing is that optimistically, finding a site and the county purchasing the site, and then developing a plan, which may even involve rezoning, some rezoning, and going through the environmental work is likely to take five years.
There's, I don't think anything less than that is a reasonable, I mean, it could be beat, but at the rate that county government has to operate with, I mean, the number of public meetings just to get over a location issue is going to be substantial. From there, once that location is picked, to then get funding in place, to get plans drawn, operational stuff, environmental review, and everything down the line, five years is not an unrealistic timeframe.
Actually, from where I sit, it's going to be seven. They've already had two. So it's going to be seven.
Okay. So I don't know, is there more discussion on this, or I'm looking for a motion of some kind?
I can't, I can't.
Challenging.
I can't make a motion to approve it. Sorry, guys.
You can make a motion to do whatever.
If I can aid this discussion at all.
What are our options?
If I, if I can aid this discussion at all.
Please.
I believe it was Commissioner Moss who mentioned annual reviews. Remember, this is a recommendation on a conditional use permit that we're making to the Board of Supervisors. So, so in that recommendation, if there's concern about the time limit, or concern about how long it's going to take to find a new facility, certainly a part of your recommendation could be that the Board of Supervisors do either a one-year review or a two-year review to see what the status is of finding a permanent location.
And that would be the Board of Supervisors?
Right. I mean, so that's what we have to remember. I mean, this is a recommendation, you know, if the use permit, the land use is appropriate, and if you do find it meets the findings, you know, what is a guarantee on the outlook of a permanent facility? Certainly a review, a check-in would provide that opportunity, whatever time interval that was.
Where would you add that?
And just as part of your motion. So right now, the request, you know, from staff is a five-year term. So within that five years, would you want the board to look at this again after a year? Or the commission? They could come back to the commission and review it after a year, maybe that's appropriate, and get an update on what the county is doing on, you know, finding a permanent location.
We could recommend to not approve this, correct?
Absolutely.
Since it's only a recommendation.
Absolutely.
Let me tear off of what EJ is saying and kind of see if we can give you a menu, so to speak. One option is, Commissioner Curry has said, is to recommend denial of the conditional use permit. That's one option. Option two would be to support staff's recommendation, which is for a five-year, five-year term, based on the conditions of approval that are currently in front of you. Option three, and this will probably be teared off in several sub-options, option three might be to recommend a different term. A subset of that may be that you recommend a different term and the annual review that EJ has mentioned. So you have variety, because this is, again, a recommendation to the board, to include in your recommendation various subsets of what staff has presented to you. The one thing I would mention on the North Auburn MAC recommendations, they did specifically recommend those for the operating agreement. We typically leave on our conditional use permit, the conditions fairly, I don't want to say generic, but we don't get into things such as staffing ratios. And here's why. Once you set it as a condition of approval, to change that, we have to go back through the public process. And it's not that we're avoiding that, but sometimes it is better in the, in the judgment of those that are professionals at working with operators, that that go into the operating agreement versus a condition of approval. So that that operating agreement, which does live and is required to be, I would point out from the conditions of approval, to be in full force and effect before this permit goes into effect, and it has to remain in full force and effect. But certain things where you may have to have a little bit of tweaking is probably more appropriate in the operating agreement. Now, as a subset of that last option that I presented to the commission, there is nothing to preclude the commission from adding into the recommendations that those particular points within the North Auburn MAC that might be appropriate for the use permit be considered as conditions of approval, but leave it open for staff to work on looking at all those conditions and see what really would fashion a conditional use permit that can effectively operate with set conditions of approval.
I agree. I like that last one. Yeah, I'm going to be in favor of the five-year with the one-year review by the Board of Supervisors. Approve the conditional use permit, I'll make that a motion, approve the conditional use permit with five years, but include in that, under the, I don't know where it would go, under the conditions of approval, I guess, one-year review by the Board of Supervisors, that we also include the attachment B, which is a safety plan, safety plans, attachment C is already included, and that we include attachment E, which is the North MAC ad hoc committee for informational use by the Board of Supervisors in negotiating the new operating agreement.
I'll second that.
And just to clarify, did you say your motion was supported by the findings in the staff report?
I thought I did.
Okay.
I didn't, but.
I probably didn't hear it, sorry.
I do now.
Okay. And so, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
I just, I just want to say one more thing, is I don't think that we're sending, careful how I say this.
You might be, you might be unappointed.
No, you're free to say.
My Italian ancestors are peeking over my shoulder. I don't think that we're sending a strong enough message to the Board of Supervisors about the kind of language that needs to be in an operating agreement to fix the kinds of things we're hearing, even with the things that we've said, so, just my two cents worth.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good. Any further discussion points? We'll go for a roll call.
Mr. Curry.
No.
Mr. Rokuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Is this approved since we don't, we have only three votes and not of a member of seven? And is it approved?
That was three one.
We had a quorum.
Okay. I just, some things you need.
Okay. So, yeah, this goes directly to the Board of Supervisors, so there's no appeal period. And with that, thank you, folks.
Wait, 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 wait. Didn't we have something else?
No, that was it. With that, folks, we see you next time.
I guess the hidden alley was the, was.
I guess the hidden valley was the, uh, was.